Thanks, Jane. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 19, 2025 City Council Meeting and Caucus. We will start, as always, with the City Caucus, and that is an opportunity for the City Council to have any discussions or raise any questions or issues with the individual agenda items that should be open for discussion or may be open for discussion. And it will not be until the regular meeting, which is to follow the caucus where the actual voting takes place. I would just suggest that and remind anyone who attends to address the City Council either an hour later that the meeting is being recorded. And to that end, referring to the agenda items through number six, inclusive of departmental reports, our administrative, we will start with communications from division and department heads. Number seven, from Controller Doyle, request City Council approve an ordinance for various transfers to balance accounts that were in the run of May 13, 2025. And Jackie, this is, as we just got through discussing in a roundabout manner, it's more of a reconciliation, which is common
Correct.
and takes place once, twice, maybe sometimes, three times during the fiscal year for our city.
That is correct.
And that's what this is.
And that's what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions on item number seven? Moving on to item number eight, submitted from our city attorney, Kwitkowski, request City Council approve the ordinance, transfer various budget appropriations. And in this particular request, there's a request for a transfer from the undistributed police and fire retirement of $25,000, increasing City Controller Consulting by $25,000. Arianna, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So the city is requesting that the transfer of $25,000, which would go toward increasing the City Controller Consulting budget. To give a little bit more information or context to this request, as your honorable body is aware, a budget was submitted on the ninth. The request for additional funds is to see the budget process through to its conclusion with respect to whatever your honorable body intends to do or recommends and what the public has to say. The request also has to do with or is in respect to the reconciliation of the Capital Projects Fund. And in addition, it is an opportunity for Mr. Etu, who is an employee of the consulting firm that the city has hired, to bring Ms. Jaclyn Dole, who is the city's new comptroller, up to speed with respect to the building out of the budget, the budgeting process, because as your honorable body is aware, Ms. Dole's employment with the city started when the budgeting process was well underway.
And one other component I think is important to mention, Arianna, is that we are down the assistant comptroller due to unforeseen circumstances, which has left a serious void in the coverage in the comptroller's office. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor. So Ms. Dole, while she is and has been hired as the city's comptroller due to the assistant comptroller being out for, as you pointed out, unforeseen circumstances for an extended period of time or at least a period of time that was longer than initially anticipated, Ms. Dole is fulfilling the responsibilities of both the assistant comptroller position and the comptroller position. So yes, that does contribute to the request as well.
Any council members have any comments or questions or directions on item number eight with their corresponding ordinance?
In March, we passed an ordinance increasing the comptroller's consulting budget line of $80,000, 20 of it which was allocated to the recruiter, to which we were able to secure a comptroller. And with the remaining 60K, we were told that that would suffice to carry out the firm fees, the accounting firm fees to get us through the budget portion of our year to get us at least till July 31st. It was something that we had to weigh heavily because we're playing with house money here. We can't keep throwing money into the comptroller's office in hopes of getting things done. First, it was, I don't even want to go into the history of how much has gone into the comptroller's office within the past two years, but here we are today. So let's just look at it for face value. March wasn't too long ago. We'll leave it at 60 and not count the 20 that went to the recruiter fee. Now we're at an additional $25,000. And that is, again, the same explanation as to get the comptroller up to speed. This is not the fault of her own. She is a new employee, and this is not to be taken personal. What should be taken personal amongst us is the ability to either vote for or against this. I, myself, am not in favor of continuing to put money into the comptroller's office because I think we have very diligent, very professional individuals that, I believe, have the ability to bring us up to speed without adding any additional consulting fees. And that's my take.
And thank you, Councilmember Muflae. And just to piggyback off of that, I think we're all concerned, especially with the up and coming budget. And we've seen the budgetary processes in other municipalities and the drying up of funds for other various reasons. So additional expenditures of city monies are not taken very lightly and should be scrutinized and should be questioned. And I think this body has done that in various ways individually and outside of this forum this evening. But I think it's well put that we need to be tightening our belts, so to speak, and watching any outflow of funds to be used wisely, hopefully. The only concern I have in this particular instance is the fact that it was an unanticipated vacancy or absence by our assistant comptroller, who we depended on significantly. And I know Jackie is not filling that role to agree in balancing between payroll and other responsibilities. So although we may not be happy about having to spend additional amount of funds after we were assured that the last time we allocated funds for this purpose would be the last time. But I do believe there might be a need here. And certainly, each one of you needs to reflect as to whether or not this is something you can support. And that's going to be up to the individual. Any other council members have any comments on item number eight?
I do have one further question in regards to where the money is coming from, the undistributed police and fire retirement fund. Does that or will this impact that moving forward? Will we have to then compensate that line for the 25 that we're allocating from that line?
No, we will not. We've already paid that bill. It came in in December, and it was budgeted for. And the bill came in a little bit lower than we anticipated. And so that's where the funds were coming from.
So from here till the end of the fiscal year, there is no money that needs to go to that?
Correct.
And if I could just add one more thing for the record, Your Honor. I believe, I just want to make clear that I believe at the time that this was voted on previously, the assistant comptroller was expected to come back in interim period. And since then, due to unforeseen circumstances, she has not been able to.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think that's the trigger in this particular instance. A person's health is obviously paramount here. Any other comments, council members? If not, then we'll move on. There's been a request to waive the rules. Director Park recreation requests City Council approve use of Franklin Playground Field Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., starting May 21st, ending July 23rd, youth flag football. Director, do you, Director Moran, do you want to explain this at all?
The gentleman from Ali's Sports School, we've been back and forth on dates and fields and things like that. And he finally got his request to me. However, his insurance certificate was incorrect. So trying to get it corrected is what took the time. And then we finally got the corrected insurance certificate. And they had been wanting to start their program this week.
And you're satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a two-step process, the council votes. We have to decide whether or not we want to waive the rules. And if we do, then we have to take up the requested action. Does any council member have any issues to bring up with this waiver of the rules? Now moving on, communications from citizens. Lynette Welch, manager of Ice House Pub for City Council, approved a request for a live outdoor music on Saturdays from June 7th to September 13th, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Any council members have any comments on item number nine?
We had discussions, I think extensive discussions, about this particular establishment with the requests of an entertainment license for outdoor entertainment. And I honestly thought that the request was satisfied where they were just going to do the indoor one. But then, of course, they had the right to apply for an outdoor music license, entertainment license. I do have concerns in regards to the previous discussions that we had in regards to how loud the music is played, how disturbing it is to neighbors because it is a very residential, you know, it's on bridge. The back where the patio is, is right within the neighbor's earshot, apparently down the street even. So I just have concerns with that. And if someone is here, I guess they would speak at the time when we call to the regular meeting.
When we call the meeting, I can see if people here from our, from Ice House, and we'll have an opportunity then to, I think, ask some other additional questions. Yeah, I think we all have concerns over the noise ordinance. It's not just this application. There were other applications by other establishments where we experienced the same issues and need to have those addressed in a reasonable manner. So if anyone has any questions, we'll hold off on that until the beginning of the formal meeting. Next item is business registration. Tree Market LLC, 2470 Hamburg Turnpike, Diana Shane. This is the cannabis dispensary. If you reviewed your packet, everything's been covered with local requirements here in the city as well as the state requirements. They've issued a valid license certificate to open. There is substantial matters to be, substantial improvements that are supposedly in the pipeline to make the property, improve the property substantially from what it is at this point in time. I know there was an indication that there were back taxes not owed by this entity. It's a lease agreement, at least at this point. But it was also called my attention that the owner, who was owed approximately $12,000 in back taxes, paid that. So it's my understanding that that was taken care of. And we have one of our hard-working billing inspectors here, Scott. Hey, Scott, do you want to tell us about it?
All I know is that taxes have been paid in full by the property owner. And this company is just going to be leasing from the property owner.
Yeah. Is there, do you know, is there an intent to buy?
I do not believe there is an intent to buy the property, just leased.
And based on your investigations, everything looked in order?
Yes. We can start poll permits as we speak.
Yeah.
Or reconstruction?
Interior and stuff like that, complete remodel of the interior and exterior.
Any other questions by council members?
I don't have a question, Your Honor, but I do want you guys to be aware that I will be recusing myself from this particular vote. Not that I have any personal relation to the owner or the business, but because I do work with the federal government and because it is illegal, Carolina is still illegal on the federal level, I just feel that it's safer and best that I recuse myself on this vote.
Thank you for disclosing that, Amira. All right, any other council member have any questions on item A? Moving on to item B, Sweet Life LLC, 2303 Hamburg Turnpike, Sugar Refinery. All paperwork is in order on that. Taxes are off to date. Any council members have any issues on item B? If not, then moving on to entertainment licenses, class one entertainment license, live slash mechanical reproduction, Jay's White Elephant, John Jacoby 144, Ever Road. Anyone have any questions or issues on that? All right, and when we do get to the table items, I would like not to move to bring it off the table, but to bring up Trinity Motors on Ever Road that we put on the table from last, at least last meeting that I recall. And what I'm going to suggest is that we schedule it to be removed from the table for next meeting and invite the new owner to be here for a brief discussion regarding his business license. Any other comments from the City Council? If Anna Follin is calling the meeting for May 19.
I pledge allegiance to flag United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you. City clerk, call the roll.
Muflae, Frye, Anderson, Marady.
Here.
Seray.
Brown.
Brown. Law Department.
Here.
Development and marketing is excused, public works.
Here.
Public safety.
Here.
Comptroller.
Here.
Recreation.
Okay, moving on, hearings from citizen. Our first individual is Ms. Lorden.
I'm here once again to please request these people refuse the outside ban. I mean, everybody here knows you're not going to have a ban on the outside. That's going to go with the code that says 50 feet past the property lot. It's an impossibility. And I said, I'd like to get the rest of the neighbors to come up here. They won't come. The ones that don't speak English are the ones that complain about it the most. And I says, I don't know what to tell you. We don't need it, they don't need it. I don't know why they have to put in for a ban on the weekends. I mean, it's just ridiculous. If they could do it where it wouldn't be bothering people, that's one thing. But you can't do it. Everybody knows that. So like I said, if you want them to have it, that's, you know, it's your choice. But like I said, I'm a neighbor, live in 19 Victory. My neighbors around me complain to me constantly because they know I come up. The ones that even don't even speak English, they get their people to tell me they don't want it. So like I said, it's up to you, is what you want it or not. I'm just saying the neighborhood does not want it. They do not need it. On the average, they get 15 to 20 people for a ban. There are times that there's a lot of people there. But they're going to go out of business at 15, 20 people on a Saturday? I don't think so. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lorden. Well, I think you understand that we've been trying to address this appropriately, balancing the business interests of the establishments to the quiet enjoyment of property by the residents surrounding.
May I ask if the hours, the change of hours would change this opinion? If that is a factor where they are going into the evening?
Yes, Mr. Lorden?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, the problem is going to be the noise. I mean, last year, we called the police down there. They turn them down. 15, 20 minutes later, they're turned right back up. The bands are not going to play quiet. They just don't do it. The people start talking, the music goes up. Start talking louder, music goes more. It's common practice.
So if they were to end their music at 7:00, it still wouldn't change your opinion?
Anyone else? All right, our next speaker is former mayor Jeff Zemansky.
And councilman.
And councilman.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm sorry, give me everybody. Let's see here. As for Ms. Muflae's request, there are two kinds of abstentions when a guy's vote. One of them is if there is a direct conflict. If there isn't a direct conflict, then it has to be recorded as a yes vote. But because it's conflicts with her professionalism, it would be recorded as a non-vote. So just for people who are listening on Facebook land, abstentions typically count as a yes, but her request would count as nothing, as a no vote. On May 9th, the mayor clocked in her budget. Was there a special meeting held to either receive and file, table it, amend it, or approve it?
Repeat that?
The mayor's budget was clocked in on May 9th?
Yes.
And it's not on the agenda?
Correct, it's not.
Why wouldn't it be on the agenda? It's a public document now for the council's approval.
We are not taking it up today.
Okay, then it shouldn't be on the agenda and then table. But that aside, regarding the mayor's budget, I had to threaten to go to the Attorney General's office to get a copy of it. I was going to foil it. I eventually got it. I was just kind of mentioned that it's not exactly for everyone to looking at. It's inaccurate. Once it's clocked in, everyone can look at it. For those who remember, Joe DeSenzio, sweet little old man would sit right there for every meeting and do what I'm doing, bringing up points of the agenda. And when the budget was clocked in, every day, every May 10th, he would sit at the clerk's office and go through the budget. There's tables on the citizen's side of the clerk's office for people to review agenda items. Once they're clocked in, they're available for everybody to review. That being stated, in the proposed mayor's budget, there is a typo, just so the comptroller to know, on page two, the value is 264. And on page 54, it's 254. So you might want to look at that before it gets approved. So it would have to be amended anyway. City's website, there is a link for people to fill out for streetlights that are out. For three years, I've been trying to apply for the light on electric and bridge curlys to be turned on. It's dark, and it's one of our popular businesses where a lot of people who aren't from Lake wanna like to travel to. National Bridge no longer accepts phone calls. It used to be you go to Mr. Gergen's department, and they would call up and say, hey, these lights are out. They no longer accept those phone calls. So someone can figure out either what's going on with their link or someone could call and let them know that that light is out. It's been an issue. Now regarding the budget, I just have to say, in 2023, the garbage fee was $325,000 in the red. In 2022, it was $22,000 in the black. In 2024, it was looking like it was $463,000 in a deficit. So the proposed budget, is this a responsible budget? I just have to ask. Because if two years in a row, we're running deficits, and those are known deficits, and we're only increasing the fee $10, is this going to be a responsible budget? I just have to ask that. You don't have to answer it because you're going to have a budget to work with. But those are my comments. Anything? No, that's it. Any questions?
We'll be looking to have a budget hearing, hopefully next week, in an effort to get this on the agenda. And there'll be notices going out, so you're welcome to appear.
Well, I mean, if it's a responsible budget, I don't know why it's under lock and key because to me, it's one of the best budgets proposed.
Let me just say this to that item. Once the proposed budget is clocked in, it's public information.
Yes.
And we've had an ongoing discussion along those lines with the third floor. And I think everybody understands now that that is the appropriate practice.
Like I said, if it's a responsible budget, and it's obviously your obligation, you have two jobs, balance the budget and pass laws. If it's a responsible budget, it's a good budget, you know? So I'm just saying, I looked at it, you know? But it's up for you guys to decide if it's balanced or not. But that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Nice, Melinda Martin?
So the manager over at the Ice House, I'm responsible for all the bookings of the bands. We do have bands coming up that are eager to play for us. They're new bands, they're going to pack our patio. We look forward to that money. Saturday is our busiest day. People are already asking when we're going to start. Unfortunately, I couldn't give them an answer. We do have our decibel reader. So with that being said, if we will follow this, we will make them sign something. I mean, if they don't follow it, we'll either cut them short. I'll let them know in the beginning when booking. And if they don't like that, then we don't book them. But we look forward to our bands. The community looks forward to the bands. We have people that come all over to see our bands.
Melinda, how long have you had the decibel reader?
We've had it for six months. I think it was six months ago.
Did you have it last year?
We did not have an outside one, no.
Did you own it last year?
We had one on the inside, but it was not put outside.
And for the record, you are Ms. Welch, right?
Correct.
Lynette?
Yes.
And you're the next speaker, so you can take this all at once. Well, this is your second shot at the apple. You've heard the complaints. You've heard our concerns in the past. We've raised them with you on several occasions. The last time we went through this, we notified you by mail to come in and have a discussion. You came in and had a discussion, assured us this would not happen. And I've driven by there in the summer when the bands were going to hear from myself. And I do understand that it was excessively loud. There was no attempt to lower it. It's almost a contradiction in terms to have a live band and not have loud music that would seem to exceed the decibel requirements under the city ordinances. So what's changed that we should consider? What's changed on your part that we should consider in changing our minds?
Well, the letter that I received that I believe I acknowledged and responded to was regarding the jukebox outside. And that was turned down to 5%. Now they're turned completely off. So I did follow that, and there was nothing about a ban in writing.
Let's just extend that conversation for argument's sake.
Yes.
There was a discussion regarding mechanical music being played too loudly.
Correct.
And that came to be true, right? It was a fact, it was too loud. So by extension, why would you think a live band would be exempt from that same requirement?
Because it was during the day. They were complaining about nighttime mechanical music.
So it's the volume, but it doesn't get louder at night than it does during the day? Sound travels at the same rate, right?
I understand that.
So what's changed? This is your show.
I understand that.
What's changed?
I have a decibel reader, as we stated, that will be posted outside for the band to see.
Who's responsible for enforcing that?
I'll be there.
Who's responsible for enforcing it?
Me.
How will you enforce it?
We're going to have the band sign that they need to follow the guidelines of block, a lot of noise ordinance and be under that decibel reader. If they fail to do it, I will cut them short, and they won't be booked again, and that's it. So if they play from 3:00 to 4:00, and they don't follow by the decibel reader that I'm standing there watching, I will tell them they're done, period.
And you're going to be there each time?
I'm there all the time, yes. I live in the back apartment. And in respect to Mr. Lorden, his son, in fact, texts me on a regular with the Saturday bands, asking me if they could turn it up. So I'm a little confused with that because they do live in the same household.
Okay. I don't think that, I don't even want to entertain that, okay?
I understand that, but I mean, his son is asking me to turn it up.
On any given day, you could get anybody to agree with whatever the case may be. But the point of the matter is you're either a responsible neighbor and a responsible business owner or not. And we've had, year after year, the same situation arise. And here we are again.
Not to my knowledge of the outside bands being 3:00 to 7:00. I've never had knowledge of that.
Okay, let me clarify my, because this is the last time I'm going to make this point. point. I don't wanna differentiate between mechanical music and live music. I'm, if, I am focusing on volume. It doesn't matter to me whether you're playing records, tapes, CDs, or there's a live band there. If the volume exceeds an acceptable level, that is the concern. So if you mention nighttime versus daytime, or mechanical versus, uh, live, it's not gonna carry your data for you.
I understand. That's why I bought this decibel reader to place outside, to ensure that they abide by the city of Lackawanna's noise ordinance.
Let me ask you this. You've had the complaints from last year, correct? You're aware of the complaints.
Yes, and I lowered. It was regarding the mechanical music, and I lowered that to 5%. So it was below.
And, and, and that's the way it stayed from that, that point on?
Absolutely. Never turned up again, and now they're completely off outside.
Wow, okay. Any council members have any questions?
What is the maximum decibel? Do you know what it is?
I believe it's 70 or 80. I can't remember offhand, but I have it at home. I don't have it. I do not bring it with me.
Oh, okay.
But I was given a copy of it by Grace.
I gave her what the code said.
Oh, okay.
Which is the decibel?
I, I'm sorry. I don't recall either.
I think it was 80, but I'm not 100% positive on that. But I, I have it at home, and I'm going to follow. Oh, she's got that.
I believe it's 75.
75? Thank you.
Yep.
And then is there an actual differentiation between that and the foot distance as well? Where does, does one come into play?
Well, I think there's a requirement that the, the source of the music has to be 50 feet from, from the bound, from the property line. Is, isn't that correct?
Yes. It's 15-foot grass property lines, 159A dash, or 159A dash one, or something like that. It's in the city code.
It's, it's based on the dimensions of that particular patio.
Yeah.
It might be physically impossible to conflict, to, to set up your music within the parameters of that particular statute.
Regardless of the decimals?
Regardless.
And if we approve it, we would be in violation of our own code?
Um, it could be considered that.
So what about the bars up the street that got approved for outside bands? They have houses all around them, and their, their bands are in the backyard, too.
Okay. We're, are we gonna measure every, every establishment? If you wanna do it, we can do that. But there are establishments that, that don't get the same number of complaints that yours does.
We have one guy right here, and that's it. Everybody else enjoys it. The whole community enjoys it. Whether they speak English or don't, they don't come to us.
The whole community is not who we hear from. We hear the complaints. We don't hear anybody coming out and say, hey, did you hear the band the other day? It was great, wasn't it? Nobody said that to me. Nobody said that to any of the other members. Let me just tell you one other thing. If you, if you are a good neighbor, and you violate the quiet enjoyment of your neighborhood, you realize your liquor license is in jeopardy. Do you understand that?
Yes. That's why we've tried to follow everything that you have given us, and I'm still trying to follow everything and abide by the guidelines with buying, purchasing a decibel reader for outside, having the bands sign it. I understand the footage, but I can't help where, I mean, it's been a bar for how many years?
I understand it, but, but, uh, Mr. Lorden quoted the, the correct port to this statute. So it's something we have to consider.
In the wintertime, don't you always have live bands indoor?
Yes.
Is that a possibility to just keep them indoor while you have your patrons mingle outside? I mean, they can still hear the music?
Well, the thing with that is people like to come and enjoy the patio that we soaked so much money into, to put a patio in for our customers.
Right, where they can still have their drinks outside and enjoy the music.
Right, and watch the band outside, is what they like.
Well, they do that without a band, too, right? They take their drinks outside.
Not as many people, but yes.
Yeah. So if, you don't need a band there to open the patio, correct?
No, they wanna hear the music. They wanna see the band. And now we have our speakers turned off, because that's what we were asked to do. So they don't hear any music when they're out there. People wanna hear music. People wanna see a band.
Also, people want quiet enjoyment of their residents. So we're trying to balance that. And so far, we've had complaints about your establishment, and that's what we're trying to deal with now. And, and we don't take any enjoyment in trying to deliberately find ways to, um, cause your business to not be as successful as it might be. But by the same token, we are done being the, the recipients of the continual complaints, because you guys don't wanna be a good neighbor. So...
But we're trying to do that by following the decimal, as I'm stating, as I purchased this, and I'm having a band legally sign something that say they will abide by, or they will be cut and not paid.
Yeah, and well, that may be the case, and that may be something that this body has to consider. I'm not saying we're gonna discount that.
I understand that.
But I, I'm, I'm just trying to impress upon you, this is not gonna be an easy walk, and, and your suggestions, I'm sure, will be taken under advisement and, and considered. By the same token, at the end of the day, it's how much noise is there gonna be? And is it gonna be controlled on a regular basis? And how many phone calls are we gonna get? Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I just question that. Well, we do get these complaints, and they're supposed to abide by the decimal, and we, we, you go, the police go there, and it's out of control again. Uh, that's one strike against it.
They don't come. They've never been into our place to tell me I've had a complaint about the music.
I know last year, we've had numerous complaints about...
I understand what you're saying.
And I've been outside in front of city hall, and could, I couldn't even talk to a person I'm standing next to. The, the music was so loud. Okay? And, and I understand what this gentleman said. And also, if I remember correctly, people in that neighborhood, close to the bar, were having a family gathering, and they had to shut it down, because they, they couldn't even participate in the family, because the music was so loud. So I understand what they're going through. I would like to give you a chance, but what I would like to see is that you violate it once, maybe we'll let you go. Second time, you're done.
I agree.
Okay? I mean, I, I think that would be fair. I don't know how anybody else thinks about it. I don't wanna just shut you down like that, but this gentleman, he, he's, he's being affected by it. Okay? So if you have your decimal meter, this is my only, my opinion. I don't know what anybody else thinks. But I would like to give you a chance. But if, if, if the rules are broken, you're done.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with that.
I mean, that's the way I do it.
100%.
If I may, what I, what I suggested earlier, uh, to a couple of the members, was that we just approve you for June. Now, just for June, four dates in June. And, well, I mean, this, this is not my word or anything, or just my idea, I, I thought.
The only thing with that is, it's, you have to book bands in advance, or I won't get another band booked.
Well, you, you can book your van, your bands in advance, as long as you're in compliance, right? Then you don't have to worry. Right?
Right. Right. But then I would have to tell them last minute that...
If you book a band for an outside entertainment, and you got a thunderstorm, you, you cancel that, uh, event, don't you?
No. A thunderstorm, probably, possibly, or they would play, have to play inside on that day, because there wouldn't be people sitting out on the patio on a stormy day. So there would be no need for a band to be out.
You wouldn't have a need for an outdoor band on a stormy day, correct?
Correct.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, they wouldn't be out, they wouldn't be playing their instruments at the electric, with the electrical outlets on a stormy day.
That's why I put the cover under there, and they, we have had bands play in the rain. Just so you know, we have it covered, a cover added for them to play under. And I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I will try June, and if, and I agree with, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, agree with you on if we fail it once, and I will have the decibel reader, and I will be monitoring, as well as Melinda. And if we're in violation, then that's, I agree.
Yeah, now, do you, do you get called on these? Uh...
I may get an email every once in a while, but it's mostly the police department, because it's not during our time of work, so no one contacts us.
So you don't have, have a decibel reader?
Do not.
You know, the police department does?
Yeah, yes, we do.
And, and, you know, has it been used?
Not to my knowledge at this point, with regard to the, uh, the bars and the loud music that I'm aware of.
Have there been complaints about loud music?
There have.
But no one's...
I think, I don't, I don't know. I, I'd have to check with Chief Packard.
Yeah.
To see if there's, if there was an occasion that they used the, uh, decibel reader for, uh, for this, this, no, that complaint.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else?
Uh, will we entertain the, um, June, um, entertainment license, where there's a...
Guys, yeah, I just...
Well, it, it, it's, somebody makes a motion to that, and gets a second, then we'll, we'll have to vote on it.
And then the burden, the burden does fall on you, because I know you have booking issues where bands are gonna be booked elsewhere. But if you're compliant, you don't have anything to worry about. And the last thing we wanna do is to see a business fail. That's not our issue. That's not what we're here for. We also wanna make sure that we, that we continue to have a quality of life for the residents that live around you. And there has to be a balance. There has to be a mutual respect where their quality of life is at risk whenever these bands play. Some people only have Saturday off, where they wanna enjoy themselves. Some people, we work in a, we live in a working-class city, where people are working all night, and they just wanna peace and quiet the next day. Um, babies, elderly, that, that's an issue. I'm sure people who attend enjoy it, but is it, is it worth risking the quality of life of your neighbors? That's what our issue is. And because this isn't the first time that we've heard about the nuisance, um, we have a big decision to make. So, um, I'm, I'm all in if we wanna do it for June, as long as they abide by the, the decimals, and position their bands in a way where it's not gonna be within the boundaries of the neighbors, um, and it stays within the confines of the time that you requested. Um, I, I, I hope this is a balance. Um, sir, I apologize, I forgot your name, but we do take these, these situations seriously. We've heard my colleagues all speak about it, so, um, I'm, I'm just hoping that everyone could be compliant in these situations, so...
Is it possible to put a sound barrier behind the instruments? So it directs the sound out away from the neighborhood?
I could look into something. I'm not sure what it requires, whether it be a tent, or what, I'm sorry.
Something, like a material that absorbs noises. I know people can soundproof their basements or their rooms. Um, I don't know how it works for outdoor, if it was like in a concave. I mean, it, people are very innovative, and there's places that are able to do these things while still enjoying the, you know, like, I've been to events where you, there's a band, but you can't hear them at the other side of the hall, because I don't know what kind of equipment they use. I know silent discos are a thing now. I don't know how this would play, but my point is, is that there's ways to confine noise.
I, I will definitely look into that, absolutely. I don't know about a sound barrier, 100%.
I mean, something, something, not just, not just space.
Okay, anything else? All right, Ms. Welsh, we will, uh, take your matter up shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th, 2025.
Grand most adopt minutes of regular meeting, May 5th, 2025.
Muflahey seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Muflahey, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th, 2025, is written. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Departmental reports, 1 through 6?
Morano must receive and file departmental reports, 1 through 6 inclusive.
Muflahey seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Muflahey, to receive and file departmental reports, 1 through 6. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. City Controller requests the city council approve the ordinance of various transfers to balance the accounts that were in the red as of May 13th, 2025.
Morano must receive and file act on ordinance. Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file act on ordinance. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2024, 2025 budget ordinances to transfer budget appropriations between various budget lines, referred to the attached ordinance and list.
Morano must adopt ordinance is written. Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance is written. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. City Attorney requests the city council approve the ordinance to transfer various budget appropriations.
Morano must receive and file act on ordinance.
Moretti seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on ordinance. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2024, 2025 budget ordinances to decrease budget line undistributed policing fire retirement by $25,000 and increasing city controller consulting by $25,000.
Morano must adopt ordinance is written.
Moretti seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance is written. Muflahey? Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 4 to 1. Request to waive the rules?
Morano must request to waive the rules. Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to waive the rules. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Director of Parks and Recreation requests the city council approve the use of Franklin Playground Field on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 5:00 PM until 7:30 PM, starting May 21st, 2025, and ending July 23rd, 2025, for youth flag football. Insurance was provided.
Morano must approve request. Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Lynette Welsh, manager Ice House Pub, requests the city council approve the request for live outdoor music on Saturdays from June 7th through September 13th, 3 to 7:00 PM.
Muflahey moves to, uh, to approve the request, um, for live outdoor music on Saturdays, only for the month of June during the year of 2025, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And also, I'm sorry, contingent on, uh, compliance of the owner.
Moretti seconds.
I'm sorry, I have to write this down. Okay. Muflahey, um, motion by Muflahey, second by Moretti, to approve request for only for the month of June, contingent upon owner compliance.
From 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Just Saturdays, right?
Yes.
Yep. Michael put the dates in there. What is it?
June 7th, June 14th, June 21st, June 28th.
Okay, I'll put those down. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Business registrations, uh, trademarked LLC, 2470 Hamburg Turnpike, Diana Shane, cannabis dispenser.
Morano moves to approve business registration.
Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve business registration. Muflahey?
Recused.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 4 to 0. Sweet Life LLC, 2303 Hamburg Turnpike, Jonathan Taylor Sugar Refinery.
Morano moves to approve business registration.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve business registration. Muflahey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Uh, Class 1 Entertainment License, Jase White Elephant, John Jacoby, 1404 Abbott Road.
Morano moves to approve Class 1 Entertainment License.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve Class 1 Entertainment License. Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve Class 1 entertainment license. Mafalhi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0.
Under table items, I would just like to make a statement for the record. First of all, we tasked our city attorney, Adriana Gudkowski, with doing some research relative to the issue of the Trident Motors application, given the circumstances under the issuance of a renewal license for the business at that location, and taking into consideration various complaints of the way that business was being conducted, complaints by the neighbors. And it's Gudkowski, on behalf of the council, I'd like to thank you for the extensive research that you did do for this particular item. It was very helpful. Unfortunately, it leaves us with not many alternatives, at least at the present time. But my suggestion would be that we put this on for the next council meeting to be removed from the table and invite the new owner for a discussion with this council. Ms. Gudkowski, anything on your end?
Nothing ahead, Your Honor.
Any council members on that?
Who's going to invite them?
Our city clerk.
Oh, okay.
You can invite them if you want.
It's your work. I was going to park there today. There was nowhere to park. Too many cars there.
There you go. All right, is there anything else, any other table items or old business by city council members?
I do have an old business item that I have a question, and I apologize for not posing it prior to today's meeting. But we did have a discussion about the Franklin Street Playground/Center Street Playground in regards to operation hours. And then it was said that even parks in general, the operational time of years from May till, I don't remember the end. But in this event, will, since it is passed May 1, will the gates be open for the children to play at the playground portion of Center Street Playground?
We have not. The last conversation I had with the mayor, as far as when she wanted to open the splash pad, I believe, we don't have a specific date we had not agreed upon.
And that's because it's contingent of weather, obviously, as far as the, and then the staff that is required to monitor. But in regards to strictly having children play on the jungle gym, swings, slides?
Well, as we had discussed at that prior meeting, that the damage that had been done, you know, we would need to get staff there earlier than, if that was the case, if we were going to open the playground before the splash pad, we would probably have to get staff there to do so. Because there was so much damage there before. That's why it's been locked.
I'm not questioning the, well, I'm not questioning your truthfulness, and I don't mean that in a negative way. But the vandalism was never brought to, at least not to my attention. I know there was a basketball backboard issue within a few days of it being installed. But never once was it brought to any of our, to my attention that there was vandalism done to the splash pad portion. So that kind of like shook me at the last meeting. I looked through notes. I looked through any kind of email, anything, nothing. And so it's just, it's a huge surprise that it came about a year later that there was excessive damage done to the splash pad. Did either of you hear about any?
I heard. I heard about it, but I...
Did you see any damage?
No. Why? No, I didn't.
And that type of stuff doesn't just go away in a day. It's not like there was shattered glass and it was shoveled or swept up.
Dan, do you have any comments on that? What kind of damage was done to the splash pad?
Sure. Two of the splash pad features were torn out of the, torn off the poles on the concrete. This is all before it opened, during construction. Two of the sinks in the bathroom were torn off the wall and smashed. A mirror was smashed in the bathroom, and then that's when the city decided to put the gate up. That's why we put the gate up, because it wasn't even open yet. It was still during construction.
So it was never going to be gated?
No.
It was just going to be left open onto the center?
Mm-hmm. And then all that damage? And then all that damage happened, yeah.
Having a fence makes sense, having an enclosed playing area, whether it's to be a barrier from cars, dogs.
Yeah, you had the original fence along Center Street there. That's always been there. But then to fence in the whole entire area was a decision the city made just to kind of protect their investment, basically.
Well, the taxpayers.
The taxpayers, yes, the taxpayers. Excuse me.
The, I know you mentioned piping as far as erecting another fence. That wouldn't be capable, the capabilities would be limited because of there being some underground piping, of course, to stretch the water line to the splash pad. Doesn't that come from Center Street? It doesn't come from Clinton, does it?
No, it comes from Center, right underneath the parking lot.
Yeah. So putting a fence up to, as a barrier between the jungle gym area wouldn't impact underground plumbing?
The underground piping jags over and then underneath the concrete splash pad. We had, we had the multiple contractors out, and we looked at both options. And we were just told that they weren't able to do that. We did.
Having a $1.4 million park for two to three months' use only when weather is permissible is the worst investment I've ever been a part of.
All right. And before we move to adjourn, Mike, I'd just like to give you a heads up. I don't know if it's broker for today or not, but the council does have some questions with the parameters of the budget regarding the additional pay periods that are included in the budget and the various ways to handle that so that if it remains as is, it doesn't become a confusion and a potential lawsuit in the future because the baseline salaries could be in dispute given the additional pay period that's being included in that pay increase. So I don't know if you just want to give a brief explanation today. Maybe more appropriate for the time that we have the hearings. But that is a concern for some of the council members. You and I had a discussion on it, and some of the parameters, one of the things that I suggested and you suggested, is being more cost-effective and time constraint reflective would be to put out the disclosures and qualifiers that would call everyone's attention to the fact that this is not to be the baseline for next year's salary or increases.
Yeah, on all the pages. It would have to be on all the pages so that none of the pages could be taken out of the context.
What is it? I can't hear. Max, I can't hear.
There is a suggestion that would save time where we would indicate on all the pages for all the departments where there are salaries indicated. We would footnote that it's a year in which there are actually 27 physical two-week pay periods and leave the exhibits as they are otherwise. But mark that they were done in that fashion for this particular budget. There are other alternatives. It doesn't change the bottom line at all, but it does cause a considerable amount of work to try to rework those salaries down to a 26 or an annual salary number with an increase that's been indicated. And then carve that last two-week period out and place it somewhere else in the budget on those pages. But that's a lot more work.
And I'll hand, I know this is cyclical. It only occurs every five years.
Every five years.
That are for, do you know how it was handled in the past? Did you review that at all?
I don't know. I, Councilman Sirdike brought that to my attention. Saying, I believe he said 2020 was the last time because that would have been five years ago.
2021 budget.
Yeah.
Same calendar as this year.
Same basic calendar. And no, it's not clear from that budget how it was handled.
Could we get that from the treasures? You know what I'm getting at? The treasures, the pays they got? You know what I mean?
I do.
Yeah.
We could ask to see.
I don't think I understand the rationale.
How did the pay, how did they pay that?
How did they fund it?
Acting from the treasures, you know, how many checks did they have in 2021?
Well, it'd be the controllers.
Yeah, it's a controller's office.
The checks, I mean.
That part doesn't really matter. If there were 27 pay periods, there were. The solution to this problem, to do it in another way without footnoting every page, would be to, as I said, to restore them to an annual 26-pay period salary with whatever increase was suggested. And then using another line that actually falls within the same account category, how's that extra pay week? That's possible. It's a lot more work.
Yeah. All right. It's something the council needs to hear and consider, so.
That's fine.
All right. Unless there's anything else, Moretti moves to adjourn.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adjourn meeting. Mafalhi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0.